I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Mustarel, roll call please.
Oh, thanks. Ms. Acosta?
Here.
Mr. Bono?
Here.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Here.
Mr. Medio?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Mr. Sabrana?
Present.
Mr. Silva?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Present.
And Mikelah?
Giuliani.
Giuliani, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vinland Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following announcing time, place, agenda, etc., the Daily Journal, SNJ Today, the Press of Atlantic City, Vista Bueno, the Clerk of the City of Vinland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. I'd like to ask the Winslow Elementary Safety Patrol to come on up. And would everybody rise for the flag salute, please?
(audience clapping) (audience clapping) (audience clapping) (audience clapping) (audience clapping)
Would you please give them their certificates? Would you please give them their certificates? (audience clapping) 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 I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Mustarel, roll call please.
Oh, thanks. Ms. Acosta?
Here.
Mr. Bono?
Here.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Here.
Mr. Medio?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Mr. Sabrana?
Present.
Mr. Silva?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Present.
And Mikelah?
Giuliani.
Giuliani, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vinland Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following announcing time, place, agenda, etc., the Daily Journal, SNJ Today, the Press of Atlantic City, Vista Bueno, the Clerk of the City of Vinland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. I'd like to ask the Winslow Elementary Safety Patrol to come on up. And would everybody rise for the flag salute, please?
(audience clapping) 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 (audience clapping)
Would you please give them their certificates? (audience clapping) 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 Thank you. (audience clapping) (audience clapping) (audience clapping) (audience clapping) Mr. Mustarel, is there a resolution for executive session?
There is. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the City of Vinland School District will convene in an executive session for the following reasons outlined in NJSA 10:4-12. Discussion is about a collective bargaining unit agreement and pending litigation and any matters falling within the attorney-client privilege to the extent that confidentiality is required in order for the attorney to exercise her ethical duties as a lawyer.
Do I have a motion and second?
Motion.
Roll call please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
We'll go into executive session after the two presentations.
That was the plan.
Mr. Yano, do we have any special presentations?
Yes, thank you. We have two special presentations. For the first presentation, I'd like to ask Mr. Greco, Principal of Durand Elementary School, to meet me at the podium over here. (audience clapping) 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 This evening, we had the opportunity to celebrate one of our very own teachers who has been recognized recently by the Department of Education. Our very own Carolina Mills has been identified as the Cumberland County Teacher of the Year. So let's hear it for Carolina Mills.[519.29][519.29](applause) Thank you, thank you. Just come over here. So tonight, we wanted to take a moment to recognize the work that she has done on behalf of her ESL students at Durand Elementary School. And just to share with her how proud she makes us being identified as the Cumberland County Teacher of the Year. And the work that she'll be doing for the rest of the years representing Cumberland County throughout the state of New Jersey, providing professional development and working with the youth and educators throughout the state. So again, congratulations on a job well done. You make us very proud. Now, I'm going to put someone on the spot. There you go. Maybe not. He has all his...
Look at that, some notes.
And she was also a state finalist. That should be mentioned as well. So if we could give her another round of applause for that.[566.32][566.32](applause) There are two words that come to mind every time I'm asked to describe Carolina Mills. And if you know her, these words will make perfect sense. Resilient and relentless. Maybe these two terms aren't always synonymous with education. However, if you know her and the story of her journey, they make perfect sense. She has overcome and endured a great deal to get to this point. And she is also the most relentless teacher in every possible way, as her husband knows, that I have ever met. She is not willing to ever accept defeat and certainly will not accept anything less than the absolute best for her students. She truly represents everything great about Durand and our district. So if you could please join me again in congratulating the 2024-25 Cumberland County Teacher of the Year and State finalist, Carolina Mills.[615.66][615.66](applause) I'm going to get a picture, so come on over.[621.79][621.79](audience clapping) (audience 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 clapping) Another big round of applause for Carolina Mills.[680.42][680.42](applause) Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Ishmael Bermudez, our Director for Special Projects and Operations, and Mr. Cooper to recognize students who participated in the Mentors on the Green Summer Program.
All right. So I'm going to begin by introducing Mr. Cooper, a mentor on the green. I had an opportunity at the end of the summer to actually attend their kind of culmination ceremony. Over the summer, they held a program with students from the community, several students of which were some of my former students, actually, which I was impressed to see them there and several other schools within the district. Just about a week ago, I had a chance to meet with Mr. Sinclair, Mr. Cooper, and their team to share a little information with us about Mentor on the Green and the program that they're looking to bridge golf with, you know, again, real-world problem-solving for students and really being able to teach them life lessons through the game of golf. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cooper to share a few words about the program. And we're looking forward and thank you to the board for recognizing the students for completing that program. Mr. Cooper.
Well, we back here again, and I love the energy every time we come. This time, we came with a team. The program was a seven-week program over the summer, but it's actually a 10-week after-school program. So the next program will be October the 16th, held at the ARM Center, and it will be indoor. So we're excited to see how this is going to turn out. We got the turf ready. We got the hitting nets ready. And we're going to run once a week for four hours every Wednesday. But our goal is to get this into the after-school program. Out of the 31 kids we graduate, 32 was in the program. One didn't make it because of personal reasons at home, but all 31 graduated. So that's a 99.9% success rate. Give it up for them.[802.81][802.81](applause) Out of the young men and young ladies that we have that's a part of the Mentor on the Green program, 99.9% of them didn't want to play golf.[813.63][813.63](laughing) But because of the responsible parents, because of the parents that hold theirself and their children accountable, they didn't let them quit. By the second week, you couldn't get them out the golf program. Because we mix mentorship activities with the life of golf. And we teach them. It's just not about the life of golf. It's about the life of game, right? So the kids come from 15 different cities. Vinland is the biggest. We have 17 graduates from Vinland, but the program was so deep and near and dear to our hearts, these kids don't graduate. They go on. We just bring a whole new group in now. So now, going to the ARM Center, we're going to have a total of 50 kids. We're getting ready to bring in 25 more kids because there's a need for this program. This program must be in the school systems. It's nothing else to talk about. We have a curriculum that we built out, so it's not just us being mentors. It taught the adults, it taught the kids, everything about this program because guess what? It was never planned. This program was never planned, but it was planted. Understand where I'm coming from. Anything you do in life, you got to plan. You start school, you got to get lesson plans. You start football, you got to get the game plan. This was planted into us from God. So this is a solid foundation. This is not going anywhere. Atlantic County won us. Salem County won us. Ascenda gave us a $10,000 check for our first graduation for a new program. So when organizations such as that jump behind you, they've been in the business for a million years. NJ4S been in the business for a little time to know what's good. And for them to jump behind this program, this program is not going nowhere. I moved back from Atlanta a year ago because it was too much crime and too much murder here. I'm born and raised here, and I haven't left since. I'm not going nowhere until we take this program all around the country because it's needed. So I'm going to bring up one of our... A parent at the time, but now she's what we call everybody coaches. So this is Millie. She handles all the communications. So what we do to make the time go fast, we'll call all the kids up at one time, and then we'll go ahead and congratulate them, and you can give them the certificates. Give it up for Millie.[954.54][954.54](applause)
First, thank you for the opportunity to come up here and speak because this is a very incredible program. I'm speaking on behalf of a parent, okay? Single Hispanic mother with two kids. Neither one of my kids are into any kind of sports. They don't like basketball. They don't like football. They just not with it, right? So they like to draw. My daughter likes to sing. And aside from that, they're not open to any other activities. Being transparent, they weren't open to the golf either. But once we got there and the kids united, once we started incorporating the mentorship piece, once we started to get the golf clubs in their hands and started to teach them about what it was about, like Coop said, it really is not about the game of golf. It's about the game of life. There was no turning back. My kids went from not wanting to, you know, not knowing about golf, to being on the front page of Atlantic City Press for multiple times. Now, these kids are now a part of this program, and it has become a family. So I urge you to support this program for other kids that are not into the sports, like, you know, like football or basketball. These programs from young to, you know, till they're done school, they're able to be a part of it. But with this program, they are able to have an alternative to that. And with this program, you know, it's no secret that some of the biggest deals are done on the golf course. And this has never been accessible to them. So now, these kids are able to go in and learn life lessons and put them in a different platform. So I don't want to take up too... I could go on and on and on of the reasons why you should support this program. But I promise you, this will not be the last time that I will be up here. So I'll save some for the next time that I'm here, and I'll allow everyone else to speak. Thank you so much.[1102.58][1102.58](applause)
So these who we have right now, we have other kids coming, but we'll take the certificates and walk them back over.
Yes.
We have Devin Austin. Devin? Congratulations. Joseph Capriati? Joseph? Congratulations. Nylee Cobb?
Oh, Darius Finch.
Okay. How about Darius Finch?
Darius Finch.
Donovan Finch? Ariel Ford? Marcus Folks? Marcus?[1144.42][1144.42](applause)
Michael Folks?
Sir, Michael Folks?
Michael. Jaden Cooper?
Dave.
Jaden Ledbetter? Taki Ledbetter?
They all moved late.
Talia?
Talia.
Talia. I think that's it. Milan? There you go.[1176.42][1176.42](laughing)
It's this room right here. So we'll line up and take the picture.
We'll give you these, and you want to come in?
Yes, I will. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good job.
Appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Good job.
Where can we take the picture? Right here.
Yeah, they're going to take a picture right up here. (audience clapping) 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 We're going to retire into executive session. (audience clapping) 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 (audience clapping)
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions on the HIP report? Seeing none, the approval of minutes September fourth, twenty twenty four combined meeting and executive session. Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Sec.
Sec.
Roll call please.
Ms. Costa?
Abstain.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana? Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kottasbadi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we have any committee reports, Mr. Fioki?
Yes, good evening. The Finance Committee met Tuesday, October first at eight AM via Google Meet. In attendance was Mr. Mustarel, Mr. Iano, Ms. Carey, Ms. Kottasbadi, Mr. Silva, and Mr. Rivera and myself. Following topics were discussed grants and aid, grants and aid, Wheaton's grant for the arts. Triad is helping apply for the Android Lloyd Webber Initiative for VHS South Auditorium. New contracts, transportation jointure with Obsican. RFP for middle school reading math intervention program. Following facilities topics, we're using maintenance reserve for HVAC issues at Rossi, De Paulito, Johnstone, and Petway. The audit is complete. Food service, Sabatier, they're going to create a second lunch line and replace oven and some refrigeration units. Also replacing the oven and fridge at Cunningham. Lastly, we discuss litigation settlement, minimum wage, and fiscal year twenty five, twenty six state aid. Thank you.
Mr. Rivera?
Good evening, the Facilities Committee met on Thursday, September twenty sixth at four thirty PM via Google Meet. In attendance were Mr. Medio, Mr. Mustarel, Mr. Farinaccio, and myself. Both Mr. Mustarel and Farinaccio reviewed current project statuses and of the following items. Winslow's Phase Two HVAC, Dan Varci HVAC, Menne's HVAC finished and closed out. SR three windows, VHS North and South projects are completely done and closed out. At Duran, windows and doors are completely done, working to close out the project by ten one twenty four. District camera bid Phase Two, all three locations, Johnstone, Sabatier, Delago, and Winslow are finished. Project should be closed out within the next week. Cameras are being named and finalizing site maps. VHS campus signage, roadside signage being worked on as signage is ordered. This includes the new Acelta lettering for the building. Landis signage for the front marquee is now ordered and in progress. The ESIP RFP, the Energy Savings Improvement Plan is in motion. Site inspections are taking place and a complete review meeting is scheduled for ten four. VHS North and Memorial Roofing is completed and projects are being closed out. Dan Varci Roofing Project is completed and working to close out the project. VHS North Water Source Heat Pump Replacement, this project was awarded to Fallasca and now the contract is working to see when the project can be moved forward. Either this school year or the coming summer. We have a couple of emergent items, De Paulito and Rossi HVAC units. Currently sixteen HVAC units are leaking internally, both between both school buildings. Landis structural cracks are increasingly apparent along the back wall of the gym at Landis. Mr. Farinaccio met with the structural engineer and to review the situation. Currently, there is no immediate safety issue, but commanders and Marigi will prepare renovation recommendation to address the situation. Technology overview, Mr. Farinaccio stated the Chromebook deployment was going well. The last phase of changing out third grade devices will start in October. Cameras, the department is finishing up the back end work to accommodate for the new cameras that were added to the parking lots in the three buildings. And finally, network planning, the department is planning for upcoming upgrades to the network for this summer. Upgrades will include all end of life servers to maintain and improve the current network.
Mr. Holmes?
On Monday, September thirtieth, the Curriculum Instruction Committee met. Present were Superintendent Iano, Mrs. Di Marchi, Ms. Gataluski, Mr. Sabrana, Mr. Silva, and myself. We discussed the Professional Development Survey results, Danielson two thousand twenty-two evaluation rubric, which will launch in the twenty five, twenty six school year. Discuss MTSS and INRS overview at PLC meetings for K through eight and high school faculty meeting in October. We also discussed the ninth grade academy, the special education updates, inclusive education initiative, ICR program. Size exemptions will be done, referrals, transfers in, jet onsite visit. On Tuesday, October first, the Transportation Committee met. President Moore, Mr. Mustarel, Mr. Bermudez, Ms. Rivera, Mr. Bono, Ms. Mason, and myself. Driver recap for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, there are one hundred and forty-three drivers budgeted, one hundred thirty-five route packages, which is drivers needed. Field positions, one hundred thirty-six, drivers on leave, five, substitute drivers, seventeen, drivers in training, four. The average absences in the afternoon for the month of September twenty twenty-four was thirteen. The team compared that to twenty twenty-three September, and that was sixteen. The averages in the afternoon for September two thousand twenty-four is fifteen, they compared that to September twenty twenty-three, and those numbers, those averages were seventeen. Registration, there are forty-four open registrations as of September twenty seventh. Registrations completed for the month of September is two hundred and fifteen. Jointures, Buna ACVT is in progress. The co-op total year-to-date is thirteen. There were two accidents with minor property damage in the month of September. Personnel items, interview for clerical positions and registration were completed yesterday. Reposting for garage inventory clerk position, hired diesel mechanic to begin November fourth, two thousand twenty-four. The assistant coordinators, two completed Rutgers program, one received stipend for transportation supervisor backup. For September, the positive, we had a great positive start to the school year. Tears have helped with the packages, working to address any issues brought to the team's attention. Routing will be addressed, will be reviewed for greater efficiency filing, DRT RS. Improved driver attendance, worked with schools to improve bus procedures, significant progress to complete open registrations. Team completed the state mandated training ongoing for any new drivers. Bus evaluation drill scheduled for the week of September thirtieth. Gold Day was celebrated for childhood cancer awareness. Preparation for district report of transported resident students will be on October fifteenth. Vehicles, two new buses delivered and integrated into the fleet. Six buses from Monroe Township via GovDeals, all buses are titled, three have been inspected, waiting on registrations. Three waiting on inspection and registration, two new Kia vans. One van was titled inspected, waiting on the registration. One van will be wait, we're waiting on titled inspection and registration. Assigned parking areas being prepared for drivers' personal vehicles. Thank you.
Any further committee reports? Do we have a public meeting report by the board solicitor?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Our student representative, Ms. Michaela Giuliani, senior class president?
Good evening. Vineland High School has had a busy first month. Before our school year even started, we had our one hundred and fiftieth anniversary kickoff ceremony on August twentieth with guest speakers including Senator Testa, Senator Acelta, County Commissioner Loads, Mayor Fanucci, Board of Ed President Kottasbadi, and Superintendent Iano. Our first day of school was a success, and a little over a week later, we had our first club fair day, which made student involvement more accessible to the student body as a whole. Student representatives from each club ran a table in the gym and talked to others about their missions. By the end of the day, there were hundreds of signups. That Friday, our senior class organized our senior sunrise, a tradition symbolizing the beginning of our last year together, encouraging camaraderie among our classmates. We got donations from Wawa, Larry's, Starbucks, Dunkin', Amigos Bakery, Crumbs Cafe, and Jim Main's Bakery. I personally got up at three fifty-five in the morning, but the weather was beautiful and feedback from the, and feedback from the class was overwhelmingly positive, so I can say with confidence that it was definitely worth it. The following week, we had our parent university and college fair, where students and their parents were able to learn more about the admissions process and meet representatives from over forty schools. Another key moment of our year so far has been the establishment of a student section at Catan Stadium for our home football games. Students worked together to make banners, posters, and decorate their section of the stands. Over one hundred and fifty students sat in the section and cheered on our team for their fifty-three to zero win against Clearview. Last week's game was neon themed, and this Friday at six PM, we will honor breast cancer warriors and survivors with our pink game here at Catan Stadium against Atlantic City. Our freshman class of two thousand twenty-eight had their officer elections today, and I am proud to congratulate President Lyric Rivera, Vice President Narita Toro, Secretary Jamison Matlock, and Treasurer Jennifer Hall on their positions. This month, students will be celebrating Hispanic heritage in the libraries with the help of the art program. Also this month, we have our first Spirit Week pep rally and dance of the year for homecoming. The parade and football game will be on October nineteenth and are open to the public. That night, VHS students will have their homecoming dance. Students can't wait to find out the theme, and there have been murmurs of excitement and anticipation all week for homecoming. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to have public comment on agenda items. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Mustarel?
Dr. Tom McCann?
Good evening, Vineland Board of Education, my name is Thomas McCann from Holmes Avenue in Vineland, New Jersey. Before I make my comment about thanking the board, I want to commend the class president, Ms. Giuliani, for doing a great job as a piece of history, I love history. One of the principals back in the day was her grandfather Dante Giuliani, and I'm sure he'd be very proud to see his granddaughter as class president. She's also president of our historical society, so good job, beautiful work. I want to just take a moment, yeah. That deserves that, that deserves it. I just want to take a moment to thank the committee from the Vineland Board of Education for fixing our sign out in front of this building here, the National Landmark Sign. It's back in place, they did it in a very economical way, led by Mr. Medio. We certainly appreciate Mr. Medio's input with this and his leadership. It's ironic, thirty years ago, we went to Mr. Medio for work on some of the things we did in this building, and he's continued to be a big help to us. And what we did was we, we were going to put two brick things out there, and it would cost a lot of money. What, what the board has done very intelligently, and we saved the taxpayers money by putting National Landmark on the bottom of the current sign. So this way, we are being economically responsible, but we are very, very proud of our National Landmark School right here in the center of Vineland. So I'm glad and thank you again for your support and fast work. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Patricia Acasio-L.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Acasio-L. I'm a fifth grade general education teacher with ICR resource in one of my classrooms. I am addressing the board today about concerns about the tragedy that we now call currently are in our ICR classrooms and special education. I've been teaching over twenty years, and in that time, about seventeen or eighteen have been in fifth grade with ICR. After we were departmentalized, we lost our all-day ICR support, which teachers plowed through that part, but could not understand why with our fourth and fifth graders having the maximum amount of academic content being taught to them with the least amount of support. So we've tried to plug through and pass through, but now unfortunately, our ICR teacher is being split among fourth and fifth grade, which means we have even less support to offer our students of greatest need. This is extremely concerning and heartbreaking for those of us who want to help our children and are being basically tied up in the process. We are technically, ICR is allotted an hour for ELA and thirty minutes for math. Thirty minutes for math, technically. That's unacceptable. Our ICR is split, and so unfortunately, the magic we used to be able to make happen to maybe accommodate some of our social studies and science tests are absolutely impossible to do this year. Because I've been doing this so long, my ICR group, the Root Awakening, had our first science test, and just as usual, come on back, boys and girls, we're going to go ahead and start. And the problem was, I couldn't fit my whole group at the back table. Why? Because my class is out of compliance. I have nine kids when I should only have eight, and technically two pending, because I have parents who have actually opted not to have special ed services so that their children would not leave Petway, which of course is sweet in thought, but they're not getting the services that they need. And that is a deep concern for all the teachers who are helping them and want them to be successful this school year. So we are asking, we are here tonight to talk to the board to please change this situation. It is unfair to our students of greatest need that they are not receiving the support that they deserve to be successful this year. Our hands are tied, and we want to do the best for them. And it is unacceptable what is happening right now, especially in fourth and fifth. They have science and social studies all year long, the maximum amount of ac, and miraculously, K to three, they have ICR services all day long for all their subjects. Fourth and fifth, they are cut at the bottom. And then miraculously, there's room for it in a middle, middle school. Not only do they have ICR for all their subjects, but then they have resource and they also have self-contained.
I need to ask you to finish up, please.
Every year when we go to do our IEP meetings at the end of the year, more than half of my students who are classified end up in self-contained and resource. So they're not even true ICR kids. We are failing them, and we need We are failing them, and we need to do better. Thank you.
Jennifer Smith.
I too am an ICR teacher. I work at Durand, where most of our classes are also out of compliance. Of five self-contained classes, three have seventeen students. They are supposed to be at sixteen. In the ICR program, we have nine students each in both fourth and fifth grade, and they're supposed to be capped at eight. The range of abilities in these groups necessitates putting them into even smaller groups in order to meet the legal requirements of their individual education plans. There are sure to be additional students who qualify for special education services this year. I'm one of those people that also teaches fourth and fifth ICR. I have eighteen students on my roster, nine in each grade. In my fourth grade class, I have more students on my roster than does my general education teacher. I service over fifty percent of that class. Two of my fourth grade students have an autism diagnosis and require more time, which I don't have. My students receive no support in science, which by the way is a state-tested subject, or in social studies. I depend on my regular ed teachers to modify materials for me. My grades are at opposite ends of the building. I go from fourth to fifth to fourth to fifth. I have one prep to modify curriculum, make copies, plan for E L A and math in both grades. I'm trying to do double the prep work without double the time. My prep period does not align with either of my grades, so planning with my co-teachers is impossible. I try to grab a few minutes here and there to confer with them without sacrificing my instructional time. This is the first year I can honestly say that I'm often unhappy at my job. I can't accept that my students have to get the bare minimum because of the environment created. The number of times I've told a student, I'm sorry, I can't help you right now, I have to go, is simply unacceptable. It seems we have a problem with student placement combined with a lack of hiring. It's become painfully obvious to those of us in the classroom that this problem is trying to be solved on the backs of special education teachers. Our general ed teachers are frustrated as well, as it's up to them to assume our responsibilities when we aren't there, as well as to malfunction as a special education teacher regardless of their certification status. We're being told that people are aware, that they are concerned, and to hang in there, but we're not being told what exactly is being done about it. We learn that actions speak louder than words, and right now, the lack of action is telling us that we are severely undervalued and that our mental health isn't even on the radar. Many of us are losing sleep and sacrificing time with family in order to find a way to make the impossible possible for our most struggling students. We sit in meetings reviewing test data that shows kids are underperforming and think, well, how can I do better? We know our students aren't getting the education they legally and ethically deserve, and we're knocking ourselves out trying to fix it. Without visible, meaningful change, the district is going to find the teacher shortage going from bad to worse. We continue to show up every day because of our deeply entrenched belief that our students do best when we are there. I know I'm out of time. The relationships we have with our teaching colleagues and building administrators help to balance the constant sense of failure that we experience every day, and eventually, those relationships will not be enough for many of us to say that we can continue doing this. Thank you.
Roxanne Durensis.
Hello, I'm Roxanne Durensis. I'm a fifth grade teacher at DePaulito. I'm here tonight to ask each member of the current board and those who want to be a part of the new board, as well as Mistriano and Central Administration, to please, please investigate, reflect, and discuss the many changes affecting our current school year. These changes may appear to be beneficial on paper, but they are disastrous when put into practice. The list is long, but I have three that I consider to be, in no particular order, the priority. Number one, class size. Just because the state suggests twenty-one, twenty-three, and twenty-four to be the limit does not mean it should be. Less is best. Communicate with your teachers. Let them have a seat at the table. Ask the teachers why, and when you do, please listen. Number two, grade level. And I'm talking about grade level size, like how many classes that are there, how many teachers, especially departmentalized fourth and fifth grade. We should always have at least four teachers for fourth and fifth grade, despite class size and saying we can, we only need three. Why? Our current triage, it's a triage plan for E L A and math, cannot be put into practice if there are only three teachers per grade level, especially for E L A. Why? Because if you're the only E L A teacher, you're responsible for three classes of eighty minutes only. You lose time also with the switching. However, the curriculum requires at least ninety minutes, and if you're not teaching social studies, you can't borrow from it. And I don't mean borrow at the sake of social studies. You integrate the two. You cannot. Communicate with the teachers. Ask the teachers why this isn't working, and when you do, you need to really listen. Number three, ICR classrooms. In fourth and fifth grade, currently Vineland Public Schools are meeting the needs of the district. I have special, well, not even, we say disabled. I have disabled children in my family. I know exactly what the law is. I sit as a parent and a guardian, and you don't meet the needs of your district, you meet the needs of the kids, and if you can't, you send them out. I don't care if it's just one kid. One kid, then you have a teacher for them. And we cannot, and they are placed out of district if you cannot do it. Communicate with your teachers. Ask them why, and when you do, please listen. Thank you for your time.
Regina Merkel.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Lano, board members, nice to see you all. My name is Regina Merkel, and I am the fourth and fifth grade ICR teacher at Petway. I'm here this evening to talk about changes, ineffectiveness, and accountability in our fourth and fifth grade classrooms that have ICR students. An ICR program is designed to provide support services to classified students in the general education setting. There are to be no more than eight students with I E Ps in the general education classroom. The I E P is a legal written document that outlines a student's educational needs, and it is created to ensure that a child with an identified disability receives specialized instruction. At the end of the last school year, we were told that changes were going to be made in the ICR setting. Our special education director, Terry Godiluski, informed each building that a kindergarten ICR classroom would be added to each of our elementary schools. Even though a new position was created, it was decided that they would not hire anyone for this new position. Instead, one special education teacher would now be split between fourth and fifth grade ICR classrooms. That now means that that person is doing the job of two special education teachers in state-tested grades. In kindergarten through third grade, an ICR teacher is in the general education classroom the entire day. They are there for all subjects, supporting the classified students, and the general education teacher for the entire day, which is wonderful, and that is how it should be for every ICR student in grades K through five. Sadly, when our ICR students get to fourth and fifth grade, they are only allowed to get sixty minutes of language arts and thirty minutes of math. That's it. It is now up to the general ed teacher to modify, read tests aloud, and give extended time to these students in social studies and science, all while trying to address their general education student needs. The ICR students that are now in fifth grade at Petway spent most of last year without a special education teacher because the teacher transferred in November to middle school, and the district put a hold on hiring someone for financial purposes. The V E A had to push this issue, and a teacher was finally hired April tenth. So these students are in dire need of more services, not less. I'm not sure if you are aware, but out of the eight elementary schools, many has an ICR teacher all day in fourth grade.
I need to ask you to finish up, please.
Thank you. Anyway, all of our concerns are basically the same, but I do look forward to working with administration to try to find a remedy to help our students. Thank you.
LeAnn Burns.
Good evening. I am LeAnn Burns. I am a fourth and fifth grade in-class resource teacher at Rossi. I currently have eight special education students in my fourth grade class and nine special education students in my fifth grade class, which is over the highest number of allowed students by code. I also have one pending fifth grader, which would put me two over. My schedule only permits me to spend one hour teaching the eight fourth graders in their specific areas of need in math. The next hour is spent working with the eight fifth graders in E L A, where some of these fifth grade students are currently only reading at a first and second grade reading level. I then return to fourth grade to instruct those eight students in E L A, where again, some of these students are still working on letter sounds. I end the day working back with nine fifth graders in math. Due to high numbers of classified students in our district, some students are not placed in their least restrictive environment, but rather where numbers permit them to be. When I am on my prep period, my co-teachers are teaching and vice versa. We have no time to plan anything or discuss any issues that may need to be addressed. While my co-teachers are excellent teachers, they do not have the specialized certification and skill-based knowledge to know how to instruct special needs students, nor do they have the extra time to address their specific needs as they also need to work with the rest of the class. In addition to these issues, in their previous years, I was always able to assist in the areas of science and social studies. This includes modifying tests, quizzes, and classwork, as well as reading tests and quizzes aloud to those who have that accommodation in their I E P. This is no longer available for these students, as I am not in their classrooms during those specific times, so they are lost during these times, and sometimes they cannot even pick up a pencil to get started. Imagine how these poor students feel, having been taught by two teachers all day for their entire educational careers, only to have that additional needed support stripped from them down to a minimal two hours a day. I went into education to make a difference. For the first time in my twelve years, I am not given sufficient time to make a true impact in these students' educational lives. As teachers, we know there's so much more than just the educational connection. There certainly isn't time for the personal connections that these children need. It is such a disservice to them. Thank you for allowing me this time to speak about my passion, my students, the future citizens of Vineland. Let's do what's right by them and hire more teachers to fulfill their education.
James Cooper.
Good evening. I'm back again. My name is James Cooper, the founder of Out of Bound and mentor on a green mentorship program. What I wanted to know was, how do we move forward as far as getting back into the room with the superintendent to see if we can either put together a game plan to speak at one of the middle schools, even if we go in there for four weeks, once a week, and we do something pro bono, so you guys can collect the data and see how we respond to the students and see how the students respond to us? The program is just important, too important, for us not to be a part of the Vineland Public School systems. Like I said, there's a lot of other school systems jumping on board from Atlantic County, Salem County. We also doing a partnership with N J Forest to get into some of the schools, and what we're doing right now, and it's putting together school assemblies. Our first school assembly will be next Wednesday. We actually doing two separate assemblies at Woodstown High School. They want to see what the assembly looks like, so we can move forward to do different counties, Camden County, Cape May County, Atlantic County, and hopefully here Cumberland County. But what this assembly is going to do, is going to show the educators, the principals, the counselors, how we interact with kids. And it's going to be three hundred kids each assembly, so we got two blocks, and each assembly is going to be thirty minutes. So we got thirty minutes to interact with the kids. I've been doing this for over ten years, speaking to schools that have a hundred kids, that have five thousand kids. We just, we, we really know how to bring the kids together and send a message across, but at the same time allow them to have fun. So that's what we want to do with this program. Even if we come into the Vineland School Systems, coming through a school assembly, we will accept that. If we had to come through and do something pro bono, we will also accept that. We want to get a chance to show you guys that what we have, like I said earlier, it was not planned, it was planted, and that's the difference. It's, it's, it's a foundation that's strong, is a foundation that the community believes in, is a foundation now that our young mentees believe in, and when you have a program, the hardest thing to do with a program, especially if it's a new program, is to get the mentees to not only join the program, but maintain in the program. The second hardest thing is to get the parents to buy in on the program. Well, we have both. We have the kids in the program that we cannot shake loose, and we have the parents that will not allow them to shake loose. So with that being said, like I said earlier, we graduated thirty-one students, seventeen of them go to the Vineland Public Schools. So please take that into consideration on how we can get back into the room, and like I said, we'll do a pro bono four weeks, pick a school, and we'll take it from there. Thank you so much for your time.
Dara Bachman.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Dara Bachman. I'm the Associate Director for N J Forest. For those of you who might not have heard about N J Forest, N J Forest is a program dedicated to fostering mental health wellness support for County, Cumberland County communities and kids. Our services are available to all the schools in Cumberland, Gloucester, and Salem Counties. Our services are based on Tier One, Two, and Three system. Tier One is open to kids from kindergarten to twelfth grade. Tier Two offers services to sixth grade to twelfth grades, and Tier Three offers services to students from sixth grade to twelfth grade. Through our services, with the preventative awareness at our heart, all we are trying to accomplish here is to build a willage. As you all know, and as you have heard from many, many educators here today, we are raising kids, we are raising our future generation with very little resource. And a lot of the time, it's not that we, our counties lack resources, it's just time and energy and connections to make those resources connect. With N J Forest, one of the biggest thing we do is we identify what kind of gaps are in the counties, whether it's food scarcity, transportation, education, academic, special needs, whatever supports we are lacking. We look through the organizations, business, vendors across the community to see who are available and able to fill those gaps and provide those services. And then, instead of duplicating or replacing those services, our team funds and partners with those programs, and then we bring those programs to the community. When I say community, it's not just the kids. Of course, the kids need our support, but it's the educators who needs that professional development, it's the family who needs that support at home, how to work with those kids, how to help them at home. It's a prevention approach, not just from home, from school, but from whole community together. So the more we get opportunity to work with the schools, partner with organizations like Mentors and Greens, Out of Bound Program, we can bring more supports and we can help identify and fill those gaps. With me here today, our biggest ask is open the doors to us. Let us have those meetings with the schools. Let us tell them what we can do. We can offer assemblies for sixth to twelfth graders. We offer group interventions. We offer group interventions. All of the interventions we offer in group are based on evidence-based practices with proven models backing it up. Our staff is certified and trained to focus on those.
I need to ask you to please.
Of course, thank you. And our Tier Three is one-on-one consultation, which supports on actively managing wait lists, which we know after pandemics going actively. So, thank you for your time, and please, please be open to talk to us and let us work with you. We are here to help the schools. We are here to bring partners like Mentors and Greens and many other programs who can support and fill the gaps and bring more to the community. Thank you so much, and have a rest of your good evening.
Millie Irizarry.
Hi, I'm back. So, thank you again for the opportunity to come here and discuss the Mentor on the Green program, what it means to me as a parent and as a coach, where we have been able to really get the support and give these kids support, give these kids mentorship, give these kids an alternative to other sports and things that they may not be into. This is a great mental health piece for them, and it keeps them out of trouble, out of the streets. It gives them other opportunities. But I would like to give one of the students the opportunity to speak for herself and say what the program has meant for her. Go ahead, Tylee.
Hi, I'm Tylee. And first off, I wanted to say thank you for the certificates of recognition. Truly, this experience with Mentor in the Green has been so eye-opening for all of us, truly, because all of the mentors are so supportive. All of the environment, like the people that we are surrounded by and the environment that we set up for ourselves is so supportive. There's never any kind of judgment. People aren't scared to genuinely try something new. And at first, I didn't want to do golf. I didn't think it would be my thing. And it was the same for a lot of other people in the program. But as time went on and we began to learn more and experience more together and spend time together, we truly grew a family there. And it was just eye-opening. It was a great experience and something that other people in different schools that don't have that same opportunity as people would normally to play golf, to give them that opportunity in schools, so that way they can also experience that family, that bond, and the new life experiences that they get to learn along with golf. Thank you.
Marian Kennedy, I believe. I apologize if I didn't get that right.
Yes, how you doing? Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. My name's Marian Kennedy. I heard about the actual program. I'm an actual golfer, avid golfer. I came out and I started just to help the kids. Me as a professional now, I actually work for the FAA. Interactions I've had through my personal life as far as professionally, a lot of advantages that came from me playing golf. I think that I started when I was 30 years old. I think it's unreal and it's great opportunity for kids to actually get exposed to this sport at an early age for the focus, for the time, and everything that it does take to actually play golf. There is more deals done on a golf course, it's very true, than is ever done in a boardroom. Golf becomes, and golfers become more like a fraternity. There is nothing that one golfer will not do, if any of you play golf, thank Mr. Bono, that you won't do to help someone else as far as if they want to learn it and they trying to do it. The whole thing, golf is not something that's normally affordable to a lot of people. And anything that you could do to help kids that are not privileged enough to be able to afford to go to a regular golf course or be in those different programs, it will be a true asset for them, not only at this age, but will carry them through their entire life and their entire career. So anything that you could do with Out of Bounds and Mentoring on the Green, a lot of us have come out, we became a family. We volunteered our times. I took a half a day every Thursday just to come and to be with the kids. And it was a true blessing to my life. So I would ask you just to really consider it, because it has made not only a great impact on the children, but it's also made a great impact on us too, as the coaches. Thank you very much, and please consider it. Also, another thing, as you see the shirt that I have now, it was actually made by one of our mentees. That's the ones who, that's the things that we see, that we see the results of, how we become one family, that everybody is there together, working together. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Dan Sinclair.
Hello, good evening, how's everyone doing? How's everyone doing? Good, thank you. My name is Dan Sinclair. I'm fairly new to the area. This is actually my first time at a school board meeting and listening to all the issues. I see why it's important that people really come out to this meeting. I like to speak about Mentor in the Green and Out of Bounds as well. I'm not going to take up a lot of time. I just want to say, like Junior said, consider our program because of the impact it has on the kids. It has a strong, strong impact on the kids. Some kids come in, again, like you heard all night, how it changes, once they come in, they don't want to play golf, and the next thing you know, they're loving the thing. I love the fact that the kids grow. The kids grow from day one up until the time they leave our program. Consider this, consider the fact that kids, you never know what they have going on at home. And when it's time for them to leave our golf program or our Mentor in the Green program, those issues seem to be gone. Those issues seem to be lessened after programs with our mentors. So again, I'm not going to hold up too much time. Thank you for allowing us to come and kind of do a little bit of a Mentor in the Green takeover at the end. And we really appreciate it. We really appreciate your time, thank you.
Ectomie Vasquez.
Hi, good evening, my name is Ectomie Vasquez. I am a parent concerned, here to express my concerns regarding our transportation department. I have four children in the district at three different schools. I have experienced some troublesome experiences this year as I have in the past years, such as waiting over an hour in the morning and in the afternoons, resulting in having to take the kids late to school, missing time from work. Most recently, my three-year-old daughter was changed without notice to parents. Apparently, I found out there was an overflow on her bus. She came home with a new bus pass, and it resulted in a change in the time for pickup from eight o'clock in the morning to seven o'clock in the morning. And an extra hour in the afternoon as well. And that's extremely way too long for her to ride a bus. I'm currently working on other options for my child's transportation in the meantime. Please help the transportation department with resources or staff to remediate these deeply concerning issues. I have spent hours on hold and even tried emailing, not able to get through. I did get one email response. It was vague, leaving my questions and concerns unanswered. I'm going to have to go in person to try to find some resolution to these issues that I'm experiencing. On a positive note, in light of this ongoing transportation problem, I would like to personally and publicly thank Marisa Teramina. She is the vice principal at my daughter's school. And she displayed outstanding dedication and leadership for a vice principal. About the second week of school, she demonstrated exceptional commitment to the safety and well-being of the preschool students at Delago East, including my three-year-old daughter Emily. There was a substitute driver in the afternoon. It resulted in significant delays. Marisa, in a remarkable display of leadership, personally rode the bus home to ensure the safety of these children, despite the significant two-and-a-half-hour delay. However, the reassurance of having a familiar and trusted staff member on the bus made all the difference, after waiting two-and-a-half hours for my three-year-old child to get home. So I am grateful to have such a dedicated leader in our schools. Marisa is truly an asset to the school community, especially to our very young three- and four-year-old preschoolers. I can't thank her enough. And that's it, thank you.
Jane Bissetti.
My name is Jane Bissetti. I work at Rossi School. Twenty-seven years in the violent public school system. And I would like to talk about two topics. First, transportation. Actually, I have a shout-out to Mr. Bermudez and his team. I have to get the kids on and off the bus every day. And I have seen a difference in the buses coming in and going out. It is almost there to 2018. In 2018, we were done 10 minutes early before our four o'clock dismissal. And we're getting there. I, in my opinion, think the transportation department is doing a great job. Keep up the good work. Another thing I would like to talk about, and this goes to Mr. Dubois and Mr. Yano. I would really like to see the Safe School videos all be put out by July 1st on the internet. I am fortunate that I don't have to work in the summertime. So therefore, I have a lot of time on my hands. And I would really like to see those videos put out by July 1st. I've been talking around to some friends. I have a friend in the Bridgestone School System and the Buna School System. And those videos are put out by July 1st. Mr. Yano, I attended your meet and greet when you were a new superintendent for the violent public school systems. I suggested the Safe School videos back then. And I am pleading with you now for your approval for the upcoming school year of 2025-26. Thank you.
That's all the sheets I have. Would anybody else like to speak? Seeing none.
Personnel? Yep.
Requesting discussion and approval regarding personnel items 1.1, 1.2...
Just go through them.
Excuse me, 1.1 through 1.5, as noted on our agenda.
Comments, and I believe we're going to be invoking the doctrine of necessity on 1.4.
Yes, that's correct. So in regard to 1.4, some actual and/or perceived conflicts have been identified, particularly, and I'm just placing it on the record, with Mr. Rivera, Mr. Silva, Mr. Medio, and Ms. Acosta, which would not allow us to have a quorum.
And Mr. Fiocchi.
I'm sorry, and Mr. Fiocchi, I apologize. And as such, we will need to invoke the doctrine of necessity in order to proceed with board matters and to vote on the urgency of this sidebar agreement with the VEA. So that being said, all members of the board will and can vote on item 1.4 in regards to this approval.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bono, were you the second on that?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Acosta.
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Abstain on 1.2, yes on the rest.
I'm sorry, just to clarify.
Go ahead.
The record, Mr. Medio. You're recusing yourself from 1.2? Okay, sorry, I think we're using verbiage.
So I'll mark that as a recuse instead of an abstain?
Yes, please.
Is that acceptable, Mr. Medio? Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. I mean, recuse.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kottasbadi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion and approval. Excuse me, actually, I would like to just recognize that Ms. Mercado will be transferring from DePaulito School to Memorial School. I know we're excited to have you at Memorial, and I know the DePaulito School will miss you. And Ms. Mercado is angry with us, but you know, she supports your transition, so thank you. I see you over there. So thank you, Ms. Mercado. I also want to just say a quick congratulations to Dr. Cornish, who will be stepping up and supporting VHS South. So congratulations to Dr. Cornish and to Deb Quinn and the team, who will be supporting her as she moves into the AP, acting AP role for a determined amount of time in support of one of our administrators. Thank you. Requesting discussion and approval of Procedures and Operations, 2.1 through 2.6, as noted on our agenda.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kottasbadi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion and approval regarding Buildings and Grounds, Items 3.1 through 3.2.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kottasbadi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion and approval regarding Finance, Items 4.1 through 4.20.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
I'm going to recuse myself on item 4.10, yes as to the other matters.
Thank you, Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
I need to recuse on 4.6, 4.18, yes on the remainder.
You said 4.18?
4.6 and 4.18, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes to all, I have to recuse myself on item 4.15.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kottasbadi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excuse me, 4.15, was that the one that I wasn't in this closed session for?
That is correct.
Then I recuse myself.
Recuse or abstain?
Either one.
I'll put you in for an abstention. Thank you.
Regular agenda items, none. Proposed items for review or discussion by board members, none. Approval of itemized bill pay list for August 2024. Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Emergent items, none. Old business, none. New business, none. Board members, superintendent remarks. I'll start with Mr. Rivera. You have two minutes.
So I'm going to take 10.
No, I'm fine.
Okay, all right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the Winslow Safety Patrol for leading us in the flag salute. Thank you to, or congratulations to Mrs. Mills from Duran School for being named Cumberland County Teacher of the Year. Especially proud because she's a Duran Dolphin. Fins up. Thank you to each and every person that came up to the podium to speak. We've said this before, if, you know, we appreciate the public and employees and staff members of the school district to come and speak to us, because some of these situations, as board members, we're not aware of. Or we don't know the brevity or the deepness of how the problem is, or how deep the problem is. I think that we should at least have a conversation to see what's going on. I fully trust our team, our administrative team, starting with Mr. Yano, all the way to the rest of his team. I trust him, his decision-making process, but we should have a conversation regarding this specific issue that was brought up tonight, just to see where we are, just to see if perhaps we can improve in a way that is, could be agreeable to both sides. And I don't want to put sides. We're not against each other. We're trying to, as a team, solve a solution, solve a problem with a solution. I think also the mentors on the Green Program, I think at least, again, a conversation should be had with this group. I, myself, I just recently picked up golf. I'm not very good at it, so maybe I need to meet up with them to give me a couple pointers. But I think it's a program worthwhile, at least listening to a conversation and seeing what they offer. Same with the, and I'm sorry, I forget her name, the mental health professional that came up and spoke about the services that they provide. I think it's also something that we need in our society today and in our school districts, whether it be for our students, our staff members, our teachers. We can perhaps, you know, see what we can do with that as well. I apologize if I butcher this. Shana Tova to all of our Jewish teachers, staff members, and just the community as a whole, on a Happy New Year that begins tonight at sundown for our Jewish community. May be a sweet New Year. Also, Hispanic Heritage Month is ongoing. We're about halfway through. This district is celebrating many, many events. I wish I could make them to, make all of them, but it's just impossible. So continue on the good work that you're doing in the school district involving Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you to Ms. Michaela Giuliani for coming and giving us a report on behalf of the senior class, and a continued success for the rest of the school year. We're a month in, we got a few more months to go, but I always, I'm always hopeful that I know, and I know that we're going to have a great year in the violent public school system. Thank you and have a great night, and let's go Mets.
Next month, Mrs. Cottisbody, I want to go first. Thank you to our flag saluters from Winslow School. I can't stop smiling when I see little kids and happy faces, and that's the best part of the job I had for 20 years. Carolina Mills, congratulations again, our Cumberland County Teacher of the Year. You do us all proud. I'm looking forward to working with Ms. Mercado in her new position. It seems like it wasn't very long ago I stepped into her classroom at Barcy School to take a picture of a student activity. At least, it doesn't seem like it was very long ago, but I have a feeling that it was. Good luck to you, Daisy. The Mentors Program, I agree with Mr. Rivera, interesting and provocative. I'd like to know some more about it and see how that goes. And thank you to everyone, especially the folks that are still here, for coming to the podium tonight. I know that's not easy, but your voices are important, and we are listening to them, because they highlight situations and challenges that we have and how we can face them together, at least begin the process of finding equitable solutions. Now, except for the usual unexpected first-month problems, I think it's all gone well from everything I've heard. So before you know it, we're going to be talking about commencement 2025, and so it goes. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to thank the flag saluters from Winslow School, Mentor on the Green Program. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Cooper and his team, and all the students who participated in that program. Ms. Carolina Miles, I'd like to congratulate you for the award that was given to you. Ms. Michaela Giuliani, thank you for reporting to us, giving us an update on the high school, the state of the high school. And also, I'd like to thank everyone who came to the podium, who expressed exactly what's going on in our schools. We do appreciate it, and, you know, we will work together as a team to get some type of equitable solution. Thank you.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Nothing at this time.
Ms. Acosta?
Good evening. I would also like to echo my fellow board member in congratulating Mrs. Mills as being selected for the Cumberland Teacher of the Year. What an honor to have this wonderful teacher in our district. I'd also like to take this opportunity to congratulate Mrs. Mercado. I wish you the very best. I know you're going to do a wonderful job. With respect to the programs, Mentor on the Green, I actually had the opportunity to attend the graduation of Mentor on the Greens, and I can tell you that it was a wonderful, wonderful event, and the support that these children had, just to see the faces of the children and see the proud parents as they graduated from the program. It's not just learning about golf. They actually have a curriculum designed for the entire program. They basically take certain values, for example perseverance, persistence, values that are very, very important to people, as, to all of us, particularly students as they continue to grow. So it's definitely worthwhile having a conversation and seeing if there's a partnership that can be made, as well as the other program. I'm all for partnering with our community to try to provide more services to our kids. And then speaking of services to our children, I have always been very, very passionate about special education. My son basically was a classified student from kindergarten all the way through graduation, and I can honestly say that I was very fortunate to have Ms. Ocasio-L and Mrs. Merkel as my child's fifth-grade teachers. They were co-teachers, and I can honestly say without any doubt whatsoever that but for the wonderful instruction that my child received, he would not be as successful as he is now. Mr. Bermudez, you're one of them. I can't say enough about having a special education teacher in a classroom, in a general education setting, for our fifth and sixth, or, I'm sorry, for our fifth and, fourth and fifth graders. Imagine if your child is unable to read at grade level. Now they have to learn science and social studies on their own. What if they can't read what's on the blackboard? What if they can't read the test? How can you expect that child to really absorb this? My child needed assistance because, and needed extra time, he couldn't write very well. He could type, thank God for computers, but we didn't learn that until later on. So, you know, he also had attentional issues, which many of these kids have, and needed to be pulled out during test-taking, and he flourished in that kind of setting. But by removing a full-time ICR teacher in these critical grades, it's really doing a disservice. So I really hope that we, as a board, and the district as a whole, can really do something about going back to what we had. We can't take away resources from the kids that need it the most. It's just, it's a recipe for disaster, and I really believe that ultimately, it's our kids that are not going to be able to keep up once they get into the more rigorous subjects in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Despite the fact that my child was a classified student, my child was able to participate in the AMSA program. My child is a very smart kid, but because he had the support of these wonderful ICR teachers that helped him and encouraged him and gave him the skills that he needed to compensate for some of the issues that he had. So please, as a board, I hope that we continue to fight for these kids. These kids really, really need these teachers, so just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Not to repeat what you've already heard, I agree with everything that Mr. Rivera, Mr. Sabrana, Mr. Silva, and Ms. Acosta said. In addition, I would hope to send Rich Panis a speedy recovery. He had double bypass surgery on Monday, and he's looking towards a two-month recovery period, possibly three. And I'd like to congratulate our football team, which creamed Clearview 53 to nothing. And yesterday, our boys soccer team won 2 to 1 against Ocean City, which is a pretty big win for them. Thank you.
I'd like to definitely congratulate the Cumberland County Teacher of the Year. What an honor and a privilege it must be. Dennis Rivera says it all the time, we have the best district in the state, and this is a perfect example of why, and support of the positivity that comes out of violent public schools. So thank you for all your hard work and continued success. Thank you to everyone that came to the microphone tonight, especially in reference to the ICR and support needed. It does take a village, can't do it alone. If we do not know the problems that are at hand from the boots on the ground, how can we fix the problem? So you brought a lot of positive reinforcement and ideas of what we need and what we're lacking, and it's appreciated by the board. And we know what it takes to get up at a microphone. I hear it all the time. I don't agree with it. I think we need to see more of this within our district, and I'm proud of each and every one of you guys that came out tonight to say what you said at the microphone. So thank you. And I agree with Mr. Medio, everyone tonight, on what they said, and also a special graduation to Coach Luciano on his tennis team for making the playoffs and having a first victory yesterday, and continued success in the state tournament. Hopefully, we bring a state trophy home. Thank you.
Nothing at this time. Just a couple announcements. Tonight, we have a few of our principals here this evening, and I wanted to make sure to celebrate our principals and recovering principals who are sitting over here as well for a happy National Principals Month. It's because of their leadership and their dedication to the school district. It's incredible where we are, because it's on their back with their work with our teachers. So let's just hear it for our principals who are in attendance this evening. We are super excited to continue the work. Back-to-school nights have been excellent so far, few to go. Everything has been well-done, well-attended, engaged in activities, and lots of connections with our community. Our first CPAC meeting is, was on the 24th. We had nearly 70 community members, partners, team members. We have a great focus this year, which is on family engagement, engaging the parents in education. So it's going to be a wonderful opportunity to connect schools, community, and parents. We're a little more than halfway through our Hispanic Heritage Month. Lots of activities coming up. Saboteurs having their Hispanic Heritage Event on the 3rd, 5:30 PM, and then on the 17th, we have the Memorial School, the Latin Cultural Celebration, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. I believe Mr. Rivera will be probably dancing that evening to the wonderful music, because he loves to dance, is what I hear. Also, a couple really cool events coming up this weekend. On Saturday, Devon Family Festival, hosted by New Jersey First Lady Tammy Murphy, here at Gaton, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The night before, Friday night, we have another football game. Michaela organized an incredible student section at our last game last Thursday, and it was the best atmosphere I've seen in my time here at Devon High School. So shout-out to the Devon High School team, to our administrators who supported Michaela, to the students who came out. It was incredible, so much fun was had. October 19th, Annual Devon High School Homecoming Parade and Football Game. The parade begins at 10:00. We march down Landis. All of our board members are encouraged to participate and walk with us as we celebrate another wonderful homecoming game. The Ninth Annual Family Fun Night, October 22nd, 6:00 to 9:00 PM at Devon High School. It's always a great time had there, so just, if you have a moment, come on out, get some treats, hayrides, music, and more. I also want to point out that we heard from some of our teachers, many faces that I recognize from my visits to schools, high-quality classrooms, very involved, engaged staff members. It wasn't noted tonight, but it should be said that tomorrow morning, there's actually a meeting already scheduled with the association reps to discuss some of the challenges that we've heard. And there's already been meetings held prior to between Kelly Castellini and Terry Godluzski and some of our association reps on this topic of providing additional support for our students. In the last two years, we've added five additional classrooms to support our self-contained programs. The population continues to grow. We've had over 39 students transfer into the district this year, so it is a challenge that we see. We are actively working on it, and we appreciate the opportunity to collaborate with the association to look at these issues holistically and come up with a plan to resolve and provide a better service to our students. We know it's a critical opportunity to work with, for our babies, and also to support our teachers, because we want our teachers to be ready to go and not stressed out providing instruction. And I know that is also the mission of the Special Ed, our Student Services Department under the leadership of Terry Godluzski. So thank you, and that's it for me.
I would like to just to agree with every one of my fellow board members tonight. I do want to congratulate Mrs. Mills. We are so very, very proud of you. Congratulations, Ms. Mercado, on the move over, and to Dr. Cornish. And I would like to say before I close that I believe, since I've been on the board, this is one of the best openings of the school years that I've seen. So I have to commend our staff, all of our staff, our administration, and especially our Violin High School people over there. So I would just like to, and I'm going to end it on that. So with that being said, do I have a motion? Second? On favor?